Good evening, everyone. We will call a budget meeting to order for Thursday, April the 18th. As you can obviously see, this meeting is being held in person. It can also be viewed on local cable channel 1303 or on the Internet by accessing bucksportmaine.gov and selecting agendas and minutes and choosing this meeting and clicking on the video button next to the...
Sir, we can bail it here if you want.
I'll try to do better. Questions or comments may be submitted prior to or during the meeting by emailing slassard@bucksportmaine.gov or during the meeting by calling 307-8030. George will call later on.
Counselor Mark Eastman.
Here.
Counselor Tracy Hare.
Here.
Mayor Paul Bissonnette.
Here.
Counselor Dan Ormsby.
Here.
Counselor Ed Brankton.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we are going to go through various budgets and we will lead off with recreation.
Okay, is Matt here? No, I don't see him. So our, not beginners, our Y persons. So the recreation budget includes a number of pieces of the puzzle. Our senior center director is the first line item who is thirty, twenty-five hours a week. It says swimming pool payroll. That is the Y contract that we have for all Y services, not just the pool, but it is the pool and the staffing of the pool as well. And that has a 3.3% increase over last year. Last year was at one, 150 and this year it's 155. Part-time assistance is the employee that we have that at the time we changed from having a two-person recreation department to a Y contract. The director had retired. We had one other employee that then converted to an employee that we contract to RSU 25 as a community liaison to, it deals with truancy and homelessness and those kind of issues in the school system. And RSU 25 reimburses us for the majority of that wage. Program supplies, building supplies is anything related to the buildings that the town has. These are equipment maintenance or care, the same. Telephone is the telephone lines that are at the various facilities that recreation uses. Heating fuel is fuel that's utilized at the senior center. That's, that's under discussion at the moment because we've discovered that propane is doing more than being used for cooking. It also funds other functions there, not funds. It's utilizing other functions and the town's paying. So that's the budget for that. Electricity, again, that's all of our recreational facilities, including the pool, which has high electrical bills in the summer. Water, primarily that's the filling of the pool. Snowmobile club, that's a pass-through. We take in registration fees for registering snowmobiles and we, we then pay that out to the local snowmobile club who does trail maintenance and, and that kind of work. Excuse me. Rent is the amount of money that we pay to Buckport Square, Stanford Management, for the rent of the space where the senior center is at Buckport Square. And then youth athletic expense, our funds that the town has on hand to support programs that are, are youth athletic programs that are outside of what's being done with the Y. For example, we just did, if you remember, a thousand dollars to Little League to do work at Regiggin Field. That's what those funds are. So the bottom line is that this, the overall budget is up 2.15%. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has about...
Just to clarify, why did the electricity go down 30%?
Our, this past year, our rate, we've signed a new contract with Constellation. Our rate went down in some areas and I also analyzed in this budget the exact expenditures for the past couple of years, percentage-wise of what we did with the budget. If you noticed, last year's budget was 11,003. We're not going to come close to hitting that this year. As we did when we looked at police fire EMS, we've tried to come closer to actual this year in order to get the budget as fine-tuned as it can. So that's what that is.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Next, let's talk about the waterfront.
Good evening, Sues. Put the budget up front for you. We spoke at the end of last budget season about moving the crane rental into my line item since it is, the waterfront is the town dock, so that's why you see a slight increase in the equipment rental expense. We're realizing now that equipment maintenance, because Matt and the highway crew's able to service our equipment, we're seeing a decrease in the expenses there. Unfortunately, we're seeing an increase in building maintenance and repair and that goes from anywhere from the lights on the waterfront, that we've got four out, I have an electrician looking at those, to the pond, to the vandalism, to every, you know, just regular normal wear and tear, but...
Floods.
Floods. Yeah. But other than that, personnel increase, three of the four employees were under minimum wage, new minimum wage law went into effect, and then the 3% increase for longevity with the town for all four of them. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions right now for Rich?
No, right now, no.
Straightforward. Okay. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Next will be Marina.
Harbor Master Ormsby is here with us this evening as well. We saw a significant decrease this year in float maintenance because of the floats that we were able to repair. And now with the most recent request you've given us, we should continue to see that, we should be able to manage that even better going forward at that point for you. The one area where we might run into is building repair. The bar harbor side of the building has an old barn door upstairs. Well, there are no storms. We also had Niagara Falls in there because, and it doesn't do anything. It was there for Port Harbor Marine to pull you up some of their equipment stuff, so we'd like to eliminate that barn door, get a window in there and have it all one unit so that it stops coming into the building. But other than that, the marina itself is in really great shape. We've hired someone this year to replace the late Bill Gray, so we'll be back to full staff. I won't have to be at the marina as much. Overtime was an issue last year only because we were running on two people and a Rich, so I don't get paid out of that budget, but the harbor master and Jess did. We are full and we still have a two-page waitlist.
My question. Does the budget account for, like when we have the bigger storms that do damage, does that account for overtime? Do we use a lot of overtime during those times or...
The harbor master comes in, Mike can come in. So a couple of years ago, when we had the, what'd you call that? That thing that ripped the, the microburst. That was an all-hands-on-deck.
Yeah, that was damage. But this last storm, as far as the marina damage, we didn't have any. It just, the buildings are stilts. Flood came up to this first stair top of the bathroom stairs, but that didn't get into the building. So everything was fine. A couple of town floats floated away, but we recovered those. And it was just debris and on the property had to be picked up. That was, that was basically all that happened, so.
Good question. Yeah, so typically if something like that happens, myself, the harbor master, deputy harbor master, and the town crew. I think the last time it was seven or eight of us out there.
That's why I asked, because I drove down and you were all down there. I couldn't tell which department was down there, it was all of you, so it was interesting to see if we budgeted it.
Bill Gray and I during that storm, we pretty much took care of that for the next, we had one week before the cruise ships and the, what was it?
Santa Maria.
The boat, Santa Maria was coming into town. So we were managed to get everything done, along with the guys that are actually building our floats this year that got the bid. They built three, they were building our other floats and they got, they helped us by building three floats that were destroyed during that storm. Because they had all the stuff right there, so it was all done real fast, so within a week we had it all done, moved all people's boats back and reversed how the people...
Awesome. And let's just call it out while we're all talking about it. If we look at the expenses side of the marina, it's down almost $9,000 from last year and the revenue is up, just under 13,000, so.
Key repairs down and things go the right way.
Yep. And the marina is paying for itself.
Yes.
That is a, yep.
You notice now the gas and diesel account now that we have, that, that's a huge improvement at the facility that we now also offer diesel for boats because there wasn't anything between us and our way, so where our boats were having to go, way to get it.
And revenue from the cruise ships will be interesting because we go from 10 visits to 24. Now, we don't know what impact that will have on rubbish, so the trips will start in Bangor and I was talking to Tracy the other day, apparently they're going to end in Bangor as well, so apparently they're coming full circle. So like I said, I don't know on the rubbish side, but we get more money on the length and stay side anyway, so.
They also are interested in signing a relationship agreement with the town. They're very excited about our new, our $4.1 million town dock that's been approved in funding, so council will be looking at that coming up.
Richard mentioned the upstairs window and things like that. Is that, when are you planning to do that, on doing that?
Probably July, after July 1st.
Okay.
Yeah. Because other than that, if you remember, we've gotten a heat pump. We took care of the water lines through building maintenance this year, seriously at the point where once these new floats get built and that part is done, marina expense should quite, go down quite considerably going forward because everything's being maintained and is essentially new. Yeah.
Any other marina question?
Oh, rental went up there just because that's the old cost of the crane. We pay a fuel fee now, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Next is capital improvement.
This budget is not the budget where every department says we want to spend and buy and this says what we would set aside in our reserves this year for use in some of those projects. Fire equipment, 30. Public safety, that's the building, 20,000. Highway equipment, 130,000, and that accommodates the debt service on the things that we have that are outstanding now, plus some extra. Ambulance is $20,000. We know that we're going to have to borrow for the ambulance we've bought. This is, this is a hedge against something else being needed on the rig that, in the interim. Police equipment is the same budget as last year, even though we are looking at doing leasing, that this, between the current year's budget and next year's budget, this will leave some in the bank, so to speak, as we move forward under that leasing program.
But we still need to keep setting aside...
Yes, we do.
...for equipment to, to stop those cruisers.
That's correct. Office equipment is just what it says here in the, in the building. And then informational technology has gone from 4010. What we were doing prior to was taking some operational expenses out of a technology reserve. You'll notice when we get to those budgets this year that I have pulled the IT costs overall for the town out and put them in a separate budget along with the PEG channel so that it, it's, it's a more transparent way to see what technology costs us overall for, for the basics that cover the town, etc. So that's why that IT one has gone down as a reserve fund. Overall, the, my recommendation is down almost 10% over...
Question? We not setting anything aside for the animal shelter, just kind of because we know it's coming?
We know it's coming, but we don't know what we're going to do with it yet. And, and the, the discussion prior to it been that whatever happened with the animal shelter, there would be a, a portion of that that would be done through a capital campaign, that it, it wasn't going to be a total tax thing and depending on the cost of that, you know, prior to the, the change, if the change occurs in the, in the amount that the town can spend, that you can spend before needing referendum, we're going to be out there anyway with that. Even if you do have a capital campaign, if you're going to spend more than $300,000, even if you're, it's not tax dollars, it's still part of the vote.
And the waterfront reserve, with all the damage and everything, do we need something in the reserve account for that to...
I didn't this year because we're doing the two studies this year, which we have grants for to do that, and then at the end of those studies, we'll have a much clearer picture of what we're going to need for resources and, and the council will have to be thinking about how it wants to look at funding that.
Yep.
But right now, it, I, I don't have a number to even be guessing at, so it didn't seem responsible to just put in money that, until we have some idea of what we're doing.
Yep.
Before we get started with that, a couple of things. There are 19 groups here that are listed, maybe more, but 19 groups on this list to present this evening. We're allotting three minutes each. You've already submitted a lot of information and rationale for your requests, but 19 groups at three minutes apiece is 57 minutes. If we carry over, which I'm sure one will a little bit, that's pushing an hour, so we're going to try to manage that as best as we can. George has an alarm that will go off. You can finish your sentence. And I'm going to kind of have to be obstinate if we go beyond that. I'll try not to be though. And the other thing, and I want to call it out early, I want, because I want everybody to be aware, if you're not already, the, the limit that we have to spend per council rules for, this was passed in 2018, I believe, maybe 2017, but anyway, the limit that we have to spend this year is $83,898. The requests as of today are $111,478. That means that as of today, we need to reduce $27,580 from these requests. I'm calling that out now so that nobody here is surprised. The council has some hard decisions to make. Good? Okay. We've got a little bit of time, but we're not making those decisions this evening. Certainly want to hear the rationales for everything, but I just wanted everybody to know where that stands. All right.
Okay.
Yes.
The sheet that's on the viewer includes the amount that every, the full amount that every entity has requested. And that's actually 170,000 and change because we have to add the 9,500 in for the American Legion, it was not part of the original total. The 111, I went through and made some adjustment proposals to the council based on your, your actions in prior years. Certainly nobody's bound by anything I put in the budget, but I followed what you had done in prior years in terms of some of those, but for the purpose of tonight, these are the numbers that have been requested by everybody, so that if you were to go based on the actual amount requested and the amount we have available, it's, it's $80,000.
Yep. Thank you for calling that out because I've been going through these, so I've kind of have, that's actually, yeah, the number requested, as you can see, is over two times the amount that we are, by ordinance allowed to spend, so. All right. So, you ready, George?
I'm ready.
All right. We, and it looks like this list is in alphabetical order, which is how we should do it. So the first group to present this evening is the American Legion. Hello, sir.
Good evening. My name is Vince Christenzianna. I'm a member, a member of American Legion Post 93 here in Buckport. Did you receive our package?
Yes.
Thank you. Then I'll get right to it. We're seeking assistance from the residents of the town of Buckport through a social services budget line item. We've been committed to supporting the local community, our military members, their families, while performing corrective maintenance on our property. That's what we're seeking. The American Legion is the nation's largest wartime veterans organization. We've successfully raised money in this town to build the veterans memorial and maintain the veterans memorial. This is exception to that. We have our sustainability fund for that. We're asking for specific assistance, specific community assistance with corrective maintenance on our building at 58 Elm Street. Take any questions?
Just, I want, I wanted to be clear, is this a one-time request? It's okay to say no.
If you give, if you... If you give me 9,500, I won't be back for a while.
Okay, I see what you're saying. No, I, no, I totally...
I won't be back for a very long time.
No, I get it, yeah. But what you're saying is you don't want to say yes, and if you come back in 10 years to have it held against you, I totally get it.
Yep.
Okay.
10 years?
Five years.
Five?
Three years.
Five?
I know, I see where you're going with that, yep.
You know, all gave some, some gave all.
Yep.
Let's...
I just wanted to be clear as to the nature of it.
I'm not going to come back and ask that every year.
Sure.
But we need, they've constantly been working on the community.
Yep.
And they haven't asked for themselves. They haven't worked for themselves.
Yep.
Every year, they fundraise to send kids to Camp Deer ago and we're asking for some community assistance. Make the building watertight and put us in a position where some of the younger members are aging, some of the younger members can help us. It's a, it's a place where we meet so that we can talk about fundraising, so that we can get away from our business and discuss our community business, whether it be ourselves, our mental health, our business, or the club's business, and then community support. So it's, it's much different than meeting here or meeting somewhere else. That's what we're asking.
How many members do you have?
Approximately 50, and that's from the majority of Buckport, but it's from five or six different towns. Verona, Prox, Orland, maybe there's one from Hamden, one from Bangor, but approximately 50. There's 170 or 80 people that get veterans exemption in the town, certainly not all members, but...
Great, thank you. That clarified your...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yep. Any other questions? I'm not going to cut the council off. All right. Next is the American Red Cross.
Good evening. My name is Caroline King. I'm the executive director of the Red Cross here in northern and eastern Maine. First and foremost, we are so grateful and thankful for the support that the town has given us in the past. Tonight, we are here to ask again for $2,500 in support. That money goes back into the community. Unfortunately, in 2023, we did respond to a fire here in Buckport to support five people who lost their home. We never know when the next disaster may or may not happen. We ask for that support to provide immediate financial assistance, disaster, mental health, health services, blankets, and be sure that the Red Cross is able to respond to a disaster of any scope or scale or size that impacts Buckport, Hancock County, or the state of Maine. I would just make a note that when we submitted our proposal, the information is for fiscal year '23. Fiscal year '24, which the Red Cross is currently in, has been epic. There have been disasters upon disasters here in the state of Maine that have impacted our communities all across northern and eastern Maine. And so that is what our request is. I do have some additional information, because I don't know, we'll just hand it around, because you only gave me three minutes.
I know.
I'm a Red Crosser. I come with extra handouts. We are happy to enter any questions. The Red Cross will be here regardless of your support, and I say that with caution because we do need your support, but if you are unable, we will still be here to support the folks in Buckport if there is a disaster such as a fire or flood or a winter storm or a power outage or any number of other disasters. My card is in that pile. Please feel free, you can call, you can email, you can text me at any point. I'm happy to answer any questions. That handout, it just gives you a little bit more information about the work of the Red Cross. Obviously, in three minutes, I can't tell you everything that we do, but I am here as a resource for any and all of you at any point.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll let you reach, there you go, George, thank you. Next is Brown Hall.
I'm Catherine Ring. I am the wife of Stephen York, who is the pastor of the Elm Street Congregational Church. Brown Hall is a part of the church, as you know, but it's a separate part. And the church is a historic building that Dr. York has made a mission of renovating and keeping up to date, and he has installed ceilings and, you know, but the main thing that he wanted to do was create a cultural arts community that was separate from the church, so that's what Brown Hall is. that was separate from the church, so that's what Brown Hall is. This facility is beautiful, and it, it really meets the need of many different groups that are meeting now at Brown Hall. So we're asking for two thousand dollars because we have a lot of forums there. We have an arts group that meets weekly and has been serving elderly arts artists who are now creating art and having shows. We have an improv group that has restarted just recently, and I think Bill, we had fifteen kids there on Friday night. So we're trying to make the space really accessible, and we don't have, a lot of the groups don't have money to pay big rental fees. And so we're hoping that the town can help us with that piece. The, there have been some events that have happened and some that are happening soon. Like Clean City Improv is coming on May fourth. It's from Bangor. And we're, we're having events that are gonna be really affordable and popular. We had one that we were about to present in January that people were really excited about. It was the murder mystery play. And it was a dinner theater thing, and we were all set to go, and we had a furnace issue, so we had to cancel that. But the response to it was very good. I mean, we had people calling all the time saying, can I bring twenty people? So, you know, there is a, a need for that, a hunger for that kind of, so the important thing about Brown Hall is, and one of the things that we are committed to is having a discussion afterwards. So we have always, at every event, whether it's a forum, on the landfill, or it's an educational meeting, or it's a performance, we always have refreshments afterwards. So that encourages people to talk to each other, get to know each other. The Know Your Neighbor program was a real hit, and we're, we're going to be starting that up again as well. So that's my pitch. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Next is the Memorial Library.
Can I preface this one just a moment? At this point, the, the library has always been included under the social service agency line items. And the library made a request earlier to have the council consider relocating the funding of the library to economic development with the economic development entities that are there that are things such as Main Street, Bucksport, and Fort Knox, and Main Street, Bucks, those kind of entities. The request was made because the library considered that they were, they were not as much of a social agency as they were private library that benefits the town with a number of programs and et cetera, et cetera. I preface that only because that, that was a request made, and I, I want you to think of that when you're thinking about this. Those items located under economic development are not part of your one percent. Economic development items are not included.
Now you can have your, I see, I took three minutes. It's okay, build us points, you know. I feel like I've done this a lot. There are many stories I could tell about Buck Memorial Library in the last three years since I started. Storytime friendships. The youth who are learning vex robotics in hopes of joining the high school team someday. They're very excited, and they're all watching right now. And the seniors who are learning crochet techniques from a young man who is teaching them alongside his peers. Our goal is to have as much intergenerational programming as we can. But the story that stands out to me today is our seed library. I pitched it to the trustees during my hiring process, and we created it in the spring of twenty twenty-two. As of today, actually, it's now gone up, fifty-nine people have already taken seeds this season for their garden. These seeds are given to them for free. This week, I was interviewed by Fox News, who asked if this was a new trend in libraries providing things other than books. Reflecting afterwards, I realized that our library has become so much more. A meeting place for many groups, a place to support those who are grieving and those who are learning. We help folks with applications and printing and research, and yes, I give them book recommendations, too. We send folks to local businesses when they are hungry and provide directions to local attractions. Buck Memorial has become a central part of our community, and our mission is to continue to provide free programs and services for all. As you can see, there are other items of note on your list, and I've also included a chart of what other towns are doing for libraries. And I just wanna preface this by saying that some of the libraries on this list are municipal libraries, but many are not. They are nonprofits, just like me. And when I look at the per capita contribution, it, it's, it's hard. We are, we now have, as of today, seventeen hundred and eight registered patrons. Three, three days ago, I wrote this up, and we've had three more people sign up for library cards. Every person who signs up is then borrowing materials, participating in programs, et cetera. Our costs are going up, and we are committed to staying fine-free because we do recognize the economics of this area. But, you know, and I understand, I'm asking for a big chunk, but I'm hopeful that we can, we can figure out a way to do this. So, any other questions?
No, I, I mean, I will call out your chart, good, bad, or indifferent. This is the time of year where this group here talks a lot about dollars and cents. And when you look at, and it's a good call that you made around the public versus the private, but when you're looking at, I'm looking at several private libraries on this list where the local revenue, revenue per capita is, well, the top two that I'm looking at, one is ninety-one dollars and seventy-one cents per capita, and forty-five dollars and eighty-six cents per capita. And at present, Buck Memorial Library is three dollars and eighty-five cents per capita, or thirty-two cents a month per household. I'll just call that out since that's what we're looking at, so.
Yes. Yes. It's, and, and I mean, I recognize that for many years, this library was not serving the entire populace. But we are now, and we are committed to doing that. And we are committed to growing and supporting families. And, and I think the, the thing that, that has been so encouraging for us is that the programs that we've put in, peeps in the library. I mean, three years now, and I've got people coming in, in, in February, saying, when are we gonna do the peeps contest again? So we're building these traditions, these new traditions in the community. And now that B Port Works is closed, my remote workers are coming in a lot, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Sorry, I ate up some of your time.
Hi, Paulson, you're good.
Okay, thank you. I'll try not to do that. But so, yeah, in terms of what the town manager said, prefacing that, that is something that the council would like to consider, and I'm suspecting we would, that we can talk about as we move forward in terms of what we wanna do with that line. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Next is the Bucksport Area Childcare Center.
Hi, everybody. My name is Emily. Thank you for having us here tonight, and also thank you for the opportunity to submit for funding. Like I said, my name's Emily. I'm the current chair of the board at BACC. I also have two kids at the center. We've been part of BACC for just about three years now. And I think that we're, we joined at a really exciting time, at sort of like the, the turning of a page for the center. We have like all childcare facilities in Maine and maybe the country. Had some bumps in the road over the last few years, but we have a strong board, we have a really incredible staff right now, and we're feeling pretty energized and hopeful for what's to come. But it is a little bit of a roller coaster to keep things moving and to keep everyone happy and to make sure that the kids are safe and well-cared-for. We are one of the only childcare options in the area and, and one of the very few nonprofit childcare centers in, in the region. So accessibility for all families is something that's really important to us, and we try to keep our fees as low as possible to make sure that we can serve the widest number of families. We always have a waiting list. There's always a demand for care, particularly with infants. We're not able to provide infant care right now just because of the space limitations and staff ratios that we would need to have per state regulations. But we do our best to bring as many families as we, as we can in. But that means sometimes that we have to stretch our dollars in ways that mean that we have to defer maintenance or hold back on purchases. So we have a long wish list, a long to-do list, and a very long must-do-now list. So this year, we're asking for eight thousand dollars, which is more than we've asked for in the past. But again, it's mostly because we're at a turning point where there has been some deferred maintenance, some deferred purchases, and we're really trying to get caught back up so that we can make progress on some plans that have been long-held for a long time. I think you all know that the center has hopes to build a new building to be able to accommodate more families and bring in infant care. And that's something that we are re-energized and working on. We have a new facilities plan. But in the meantime, we need to make some investments into what we have now. So the ask this year is for some staff training to make sure that all our staff can provide the quality care that they, that we want them to. In particular, to make sure that all staff are trained to bring kids down to the pool, which is one of our, like, family favorites during the summer. They just walk down, have pool time, come back up. Everybody loves it. We need to purchase some new technology for the office just to sort of bolster our admin, make sure that our director and assistant director and office manager can work efficiently. And then finally, we need some new classroom resources, like sensory tables and dramatic play.
Good job.
Yeah, thanks.
Any, any questions?
I just wanna say, I, I went to the childcare center, and they, they definitely need some repairs and some, they need some, some stuff up there. So I'm, I'm in support of that.
Bucksport needs childcare.
Yes. Is it seventy families that you guys?
Yeah, we have seventy-five students enrolled right now, our children. And they come from primarily Bucksport, but then also Verona, Eddington, Searsport, Penobscot, Surrey. Really wide, wide range of, of families, yeah. Yeah.
Does your program use the government payment program?
Mm-hmm. Yep, we do. Yep. And we would welcome anybody to USA.
I worked there eleven years, and, and I could, I could see then that things needed to be done and repaired and changes. And if they haven't been able to, I'm sure they need it. But it's really a wonderful place. I enjoyed my eleven years so much.
It's definitely worth a tour, too. Like, to, if you ask them to go look at, when you guys go look at it.
Yeah, please, please come.
And just a quick question. Are you, are you in a place that, like, you mentioned infants, but are you in a place now where you, for the, in the age groups that you are able to serve? You're able to serve all kids in those age groups, whether in terms of disabilities or anything like that, or are there?
Yeah, yep, yep. Our, our staff are trained to, I mean, we do have some limitations in terms of the space.
Sure.
If, if students had certain, like, you know, space needs or accessibility needs. But yeah, we try to make sure that everybody is ready to accommodate all needs and that we can have them, and students can be comfortable and succeed and have fun.
Great.
Yeah.
You're still using the Mosleyan for after-school, correct?
Yes, yep. Yep.
I think that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you also, Max.
Doing a great job, folks. Next is the Bucksport Bay Healthy Community.
Thank you. I'm Vanessa, and this is Jeanette Tordif, our board president. She's gonna hand out a handout that we have prepared for you this evening that I think will explain everything that we are encompassing. I wanna say that Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities, that's a tall order to keep the community healthy, and it covers a lot of categories. And what you're gonna see on this handout is Thrive is our program where we really are thriving. When I started, I don't even know how long ago, I don't know how many Thrive participants we really had because we were going through the pandemic. There had been a lot of changes. As of now, we have fifty-seven Thrive participants. Now, to put that in perspective, when the program was started many years ago by Mary Jane, they had funding for a full-time director, and their goal was to have fifty Thrive members. We have fifty-seven, and I am a consultant, I am not a staff. We have no other staff other than volunteers and board members, and I only work twenty-five hours a week, and we have fifty-seven Thrive members. And what I'd like to point out is all the offerings that we're giving them, blood pressure clinics, fitness programs, referrals to other agencies, technology, Good Morning Program, Senior Ride Program. And I have a story here that I think encompasses what we actually do. A member coming at Wits End with all kinds of problems, and we are getting them a new washer and dryer. We're helping them get the old one removed. We're helping them to get their place shoveled. We're helping them to get referrals to programs for tax deferral programs. It goes on and on, and there's lots of arms of Thrive. But if you continue to look, it's not just what we're doing. We're getting donations and fundraisers. We're accepting grants. I've applied for four or five different grants through our community, and we've received most of those. Age and ability friendly committee falls under our umbrella. And there's so much that we've done this year with the University of Maine fellow collaboration, other grants and things that we're doing. We partner with RSU twenty-five. Last year, we asked for twenty thousand. This year, we're asking for twenty-five thousand because we have added the Safety and Accessibility Home Repair Program that we plan on continuing, which has been a very successful and is growing. We're getting more and more requests for this. We're asking other communities to support us with this as well, and we wanna expand it to other communities. In addition to that, you'll see on the back page, as a spin-off for the Age and Ability Friendly Committee, we are starting a Bucksport Community Garden Committee that has been in existence now for about three months. And this is the latest kind of revision of Phase One and what Phase One would look like. So there is so much that falls under Healthy Communities, and there's so much more that we have to do. And we are extremely passionate and thankful for how the town has supported us in the past. And we hope for many years to come that we can add more and more to this list because health and community is a, is a tall order. So, any questions?
Well done.
I timed it.
Don't you think I did well being quiet?
I saw you twitching.
She can certainly handle telling you. She doesn't need me, but. Thank you.
I just wanted to note that if you remember several years ago, there was an Amerco, Amerco volunteer that stepped into this part-time role, and, and she went on, and Vanessa was too after that. And the town relies heavily on the assistance of this organization to do things like make the age and ability, keep our status as that kind of community, and the, the fix-it program that, that was something that this council wrestled with for years before Habitat and Bucksport Bay combined so that this program could be available for people. I honestly, the, the work of Vanessa in that has taken a huge amount of work off of me because before that happened, before they had staff, once they went from no staff to, a lot of the things that these programs, they were, they were important to the town, they were, they had volunteers to support, but they didn't have any paid staff. And so I'm personally extremely grateful just because it has freed up some of my time to do the other things that are part of my job.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I remember the Buck Memorial, and I have been so ecstatic, and I see that growing, growing. Really, really is important in community to continue.
I agree.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Bucksport Community Concerns. I'll ask the question before we go, though. Please, please come up, Ms. Monroe. Anybody else warm? I, I'm the worst one to ask. I'm always hot. Thank you, sir.
All right?
Yeah.
My name's Ray Monroe, and I've been.
My name's Ray Monroe and I've been the vice president of Community Concern for two years, and I didn't know I had to be here tonight because Linda was supposed to be here. And they, they informed me a couple of hours ago that I am the new president of it. So you see how easy it is.
It got a little worse.
Right. Well, I had to put this together in a hurry, so, but while I was doing it, I noticed last year, we, we fed 1,675 people at the tune of $34,800. And during the count from the January 1st to yesterday, we fed, where did I go?
It's like you've got 549 this year?
Yeah, right, yeah, 549 people. We fed in the last January, February, March, and yesterday afternoon.
Yep.
And our, our financial world increased. We already spent $15,000 in food. In November and December of last year, I noticed that we went from 30 people over 150 in November and over 260 in December. It dropped back off when it got real cold because they didn't want to come out. But I notice now that like yesterday, 66 people came. We fed 66 people yesterday, and the prices are going up and we appreciate everything we get. Of course, the talk and shop is our main support. We, that's part of the Community Concerns. We put on the Christmas program, Christmas for Kids. We, we have, we buy new coats, adults and children, and they're all free. All they have to do is come in and try them on. We don't ask questions as long as you, you're under that government minimum, you just come in, and we won't even ask that question. If you need a coat, you get a coat. If you need food, you get food. And we're open every Wednesday, and now we started to begin opening every Monday night. And so far, the Monday nights are proving a little profitable. We have one or two people who'll come in because they don't, everybody's seeing them on Wednesday. Unless, until you can break that, but when they get down and out, they have no choice. So we just want, and I, I do want to mention that we really appreciate the kids from Reach School coming up and giving us help. They carry all the groceries out for the elderly people and put them in the car, and they're very good help. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Pretty good for just putting it together all.
Three hours.
Yeah, thank you. I like that last part about the Reach, this is from the Reach School, which makes me feel even a little bit better about.
Yeah, very good.
Funding that. Anyway, yes, thank you. Any questions? Next is the Bucksport Senior Center.
Well, welcome, counselors. My name is William Foster. I'm the director of the Bucksport Senior Center. Thank you all for your continued support. Through the Senior Center, we have programs and meals for seniors, trips with our new van. I don't know. Do you have any other questions?
Van working out good.
Yep, yep. We just had our last field trip. We went to Bucksport House Pizza and up to the middle school for the.
Oh, I saw a bunch of pictures of that, though. That was good.
I love the pictures that you post on your Facebook page of all your activities and the monthly drawings and all of that. And I would tell anyone that if you watch their menu, I, I watch the menu and I'll call Bill on a Wednesday or a, or a Monday morning and say, save me lunch.
Well, that's.
Because anyone can buy them. It's not see, it's, it's not just for seniors, it's for anyone who wants to.
We, we're trying to put the spin on it as community meals because, yeah, they are. We partner with RSU25, so the meals are for anybody regardless of age, so.
They're even for the local soup kitchen to feed a homeless shelter when there's no cook on Thanksgiving.
That's right.
Two meals in a row.
Yeah, oftentimes, they just send Thanksgiving meals over there. Yeah?
They have the best cook now.
Well, yeah. Well, I'm sure my three minutes is over.
We've got plenty left.
Okay, well, any, any other questions?
No.
Okay, well, thanks again, everybody.
Yes, thank you. Folks are doing awesome. I don't want to jinx it, but well done.
Not gone wood.
That's right, yep. Next is Down East Community Partners.
Hi, I'm Donna. I'm the Human Resources Director from Down East Community Partners, and I want to thank you for all of your support. As far as our numbers, we serve your residents, we served 520 residents for a total value of $996,116.23, and our ask is usually around 5% of that. We sent you a letter. I believe it details everything in there. Do you have any questions?
I've been through it, but no questions, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Eagles Nest Clubhouse. Oh, they're the quickest one. All right. The Eastern Area Agency on Aging.
Good evening, everyone. I was unsure if, I have some supporting information. I was unsure. I have some budgetary.
Yep.
I'll just share this. I wasn't sure if it was originally part of the packet. My name is Christopher Hill. I'm the Communications and Development Director for Eastern Area Agency on Aging. Our agency is, exists to care for the many needs that our older community members have as they get older. That could be food insecurity, Medicare solutions, financial assistance, and things like that. I wanted to kind of paint a little bit of a picture for the value that we provided Bucksport in the fiscal year '23. Last year, we provided over 6,000 units of service provided to 138 residents. Primarily, those units of service came in food insecurity for our Meals on Wheels program as well as our furry friends program, which is our pet food program to try to keep our older community members at home with their pets. We also provided 200, 281 units of commodity supplemental food program services. These are shelf-stable items that allow our older community members to have, you know, their cupboards full of shelf-stable items like rice, beans, things like that to get them through. And really, the program is there to try to kind of make ends meet at the end of the day, so try to provide some financial stability to those unfixed incomes. Also, obviously, Medicare is a big part of our, our community, so providing some relief to our community members when it comes to Medicare programs. Last year, we saved over $17,000 for Bucksport residents when it came to Medicare. This includes our Medicare 101 programs where we kind of take them through the ins and outs of Medicare as well as one-on-one counseling. So we take our consumers in, we talk to them about their needs, and really find the best solution for them. The best part about that is we're not selling anything. We really want the best solution to save them money at the end of the day. So as you can see, the total cost of services provided to Bucksport is $59,000. So as a Communications and Development Director, I'm not someone that deals a whole lot with numbers. I'm here to tell you those, but I'm a big on storytelling, and I can tell you through our fundraising campaigns and through our, you know, storytelling that we do for our community. I've had a chance to talk to our community members. I've heard some really sad stories about people that don't have a ton of money at the end of the day. I've talked to a woman that had $80 for groceries in Hancock County. Meals on Wheels helped her. The sheer delight she had about having meals that with meat in them, things that we take for granted, these are the kind of consumers that we're really trying to help. So we ask for Bucks, Bucksport's continued assistance so that we can continue to provide these vital services for our older community members. So I kind of yield the floor. Happy to answer any questions, but I hope that, you know, you, you see the value in our services and we're really thrilled to be able to provide them, so.
So what's your point of access? Is it referral-based or you?
So essentially, basically, we have what is known as our, our information assistance. So people call into our, our, our main office, and we have resource specialists that basically listen to them. They find their, they find out what they need, and we either connect them with our own internal programs or we connect them with community partners. So again, ideally, we can help them with whatever they need, but at the end of the day, it's about finding the help that they need, whether, whether it's internal or external. So it's really about connecting, connecting them with what they need with our community partners, so.
You answered one of my questions. I guess the other one you generated with this is, when I look at the breakdown of the services you provide.
Sure.
And I see that, this is survival stuff.
Yeah.
This is, this is, you know, like, you, the Money Minders program and the wellness programs, I'm not seeing any, any units served there. I, I know what we're talking about when we say that, but, and it's almost like, I have to ask, I have to wonder if it's because people are just too busy trying to survive.
Uh, you know, it's, it's one of those things where, you know, in my role of development and communications, the, the goal is the same. It's about informing people. So, you know, I find, I face the same challenges in both aspects, whether it's fundraising or communications. It's letting people know that we exist, letting them know the benefits of the programs. So, yeah, you know, we're always trying to, to let them know that we're here and we're able to help, and I think it's challenging to cut through the noise sometimes, but, yeah, this is, as you said, survival stuff for sure.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your support.
Like this breakdown. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Next is the Family First Community Center.
Hi, I'm Terry Willett, and I'm a board member and past president of Families First Community Center. The detail, some of the details of, of our program are here, which if you didn't get them already, I'll hand them out, but we provide supportive housing for homeless families with kids. And thankfully for towns like Bucksport that we've been able to get off the ground and we're successfully really helping a lot of people. In, in addition to the seven apartments we have at our house, and we are in Ellsworth, but we serve all of Hancock County, we now have a higher capacity to do outreach work, which is how we've helped a lot of people in Bucksport, you know, people who, they've run into a jam, you know, they need a gas card, they need a food, they need furniture, somebody got housing, but they have absolutely nothing. I love helping those people because I just can't imagine, like, you're happy because you have a place to live, but if you don't have a bed, you don't have a chair, you know? So we help, we help people like that. We've had successful families move out. Their kids are doing well. You know, these are people who came from a lot of times abusive situations, and in fact, the last six months, we've had three expectant moms who came to us and they, they didn't have a place to be. And, you know, they were welcomed and they were supported, and those babies were brought into a warm house and they had food and they, they had the support of the other people at the house and our staff. So I ask that you consider continuing. Any level of support would be, would be appreciated. And additionally, we also have a childcare on-site, so that's 22 more kids that have childcare. That's pretty, pretty awesome. And it's kind of like the big picture of community. And I, I've lived in Maine for over 30 years, and it's, it's different here. It's different than like Massachusetts or whatever, but community, from what I can see, is only as strong as our most vulnerable members. And, and we, we do provide people the assistance they need to get housing when they're unhoused or get the resources they need, and a lot of times to keep them from getting, from experiencing homelessness, because, especially for the kids. You know, it's hard to imagine showing up to school and trying to pretend like you feel like everybody else when, when you just got evicted or whatever. So that's, that's where we're at, and we really do appreciate your assistance. I don't know if you have any questions?
I have a million questions, but I'll let it go for now.
Okay.
Well, I'll ask one.
Sure, sure.
Everybody thinks they know the answer to this question. Maybe, maybe it is the answer, but I'll ask it anyway.
Okay.
When, when people show up at your doorstep, I know that's probably not always how it goes, but when people show up at your doorstep, what's the driver? What's the biggest thing you see as the reason for them being in the situation they're in?
Usually abuse, domestic violence, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
That's not the answer. Everybody will tell you, I know that, so.
Yeah. I mean, it's, there's a lot of reasons for sure, but from what I've seen and from, I actually worked there when we didn't have any staff, and I've been involved for over five years, so I've kind of seen firsthand a lot of how the things flow. It's usually coming from safe, unsafe, I'm sorry, unsafe situations, you know? Get kicked out of the house from your boyfriend and you're living in the truck, you're expectant and, you know, you get kicked out. Your family won't, you know, just all of that, and it's so hard to maintain housing, just, just the finances of it, so.
Sure.
And we, we work to help people develop goals, so it's more of a hand up and not just a handout. So we help people to get back to school, you know, fill out the application so they can get scholarships to help pay for it, help them get a driver's license so they can get to their job, so they're not trying to shuffle taxis, there's not many taxis, anyways.
A really sobering statistic. We hear so much about substance use disorder and its contribution to homelessness, but homeless families with kids make up 45% of homeless families, homeless people in Maine, which is alarming. It's almost half of the population that's homeless have a child in their household.
And actually, substance abuse hasn't been a huge driver in the people we've seen.
Yeah.
But it's certainly a factor, yeah.
How many employees do you have?
We have two full-time and one part-time. And then we utilize a lot of volunteers. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next will be the folks from home. Hello.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Julie Ream. I live here in Bucksport and I am the program coordinator at Home Incorporated. As you can see in our application, homes, shelter departments are in significant increase in bed nights, that's how many nights a bed was filled in our shelter. We went from just below 10,000 bed nights to above 15,000. Today, actually, Rosa was in a continuum of care meeting, and it was stated that the state of homelessness in Maine continues to get worse. Our, in 2023, of the 87 residents of Hancock County that accessed our shelters, 21 reported their last residence as Bucksport. Of the 12 of those took advantage of our navigation systems, which is wraparound programs that follows them, gets them into stable housing, and follows them for a year to make sure they maintain that housing. This year, we're already navigating nine people from Bucksport to stable housing. I'm happy to say that seven households received diversion assistance, which is something at the door to keep them from getting, having to enter shelter, like if a furnace is, they need help with their rent, or they need a hotel room for a couple of nights before their new place, and so it keeps them from entering the sheltered system. And so that kept 17 individuals from coming into shelter. 84 households in Bucksport received a food box through our food pantry, and many of those same individuals access our food rescue line on a weekly basis, some daily. We saved over 300,000 pounds. I know it says in the report 200,000 pounds, but that was before the other line reported their poundage. It's over 300,000 pounds of food from going into landfills last year alone. Families living within the low-income guidelines received assistance with backpacks and school supplies, Christmas gifts, winter coats, hats, and mittens. We have reopened our soup kitchen and we are serving lunch every Wednesday at the moment. At the end of February and through March, we have already served 91 people in our soup kitchen. Well, 123, because you found the other, the other week, February. Home will continue serving the Bucks, people at Bucksport and Hancock County as it has for 54 years, and we hope you will continue to support us as well. And thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to ask, Rosa.
Any question? Hundred? That's 150 tons of food.
It's amazing, isn't it? Yep.
Thank you.
And it's free to anybody to come. There's bread, pastries, fruits, vegetables, sometimes frozen meat, and people come every day, except Wednesday because it goes to the Bucksport food cupboard on, on Wednesday when they're open. But it's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Anybody who's in need of food, come in. It's very low barrier. You don't, you don't have to be, report anything. You just come in and wait your turn. Two-bag limit, so if anybody ever needs food, send them our way. We're always happy to help.
Home has been a huge assistance to the town in helping people who come to us to do things we're not equipped to do, which is find housing or find shelter or do those things that the town has sometimes asked to in Home in my tenure here over the last nine years has been incredibly helpful. And when I look at our general assistance budget and how low it is, we're able to do that in many cases because Home has, has assisted us with locations for people or diversion line, things that our program and the rules of it don't allow to have.
Right.
So.
I grew up in Bangor, I grew up across the river in Bangor and Winnipeg, never even knew what Home was until I needed them in two thousand and fourteen. And I came here homeless with my children and Home gave me a job, gave, found me a place to live. And I've been a happy Bucksport resident for ten years because of it. Two of my children graduated from Bucksport High School and we are very happy to be here and we love the community. That's just in a side note.
Nice to hear. That's a good side note. Any other questions? Thank you. Next, hospice of Hancock County.
Hi, you've all seen me before.
I know.
I've done this how long? Hospice has been around for seventy-five years?
Not that long.
Forty-six, forty-six. But, so I'm speaking today about what we're happening in hospice program. We, we, did you all get a copy of, you did get this copy?
Yep.
Okay, I've got some extras if you needed it. The program is for, as you know, for volunteer support, patients in hospice care and the volunteers provide companionship and respite. And then they have the even song singers, you probably don't know about those. There's a group of singers that'll come to the patients if they're dying, if they would like it, and they do, they do. You take a lot of, Alzheimer's patients love music and, and you get to sing with them and they sing with you. And there they are as a hospice patient, it's so wonderful. And one time a cat started sitting on the windowsill dancing when I was there with the hospice patient and the singer. So they also have the bereavement program, which supports individuals and groups and they also, they have free medical equipment, just like we do here, but they have it in the hospice office if you need beds and walkers, wheelchairs, things like that. We've, the staffing has been, we've had three, three full-time staff people, one volunteer, I mean, eighty-eight volunteers, one part-time employee. And in Bucksport, we've, we've serving mostly seniors and adults. All services are free and patients need to live in Hancock County and have a limiting illness. And then, as I said about the equipment and the bereavement for those, and they do a lot of bereavement, they have a whole program, part of, is separate from the hospice program, the bereavement program for people who have lost loved ones, as you know, I did. And so I know what that's all about. And so they, they cooperate with other agencies. We work with the hospitals, we get, you know, referrals from the hospitals, from private physicians, doctors' offices. And then they do help with a little bit with transportation to get, say, if you want somebody, one of your patients wants a volunteer or a friend, they'll help with transportation. And we ask for funding from towns to, to help facilitate, they don't have any private, they don't get federal money, they don't get state, they don't get, they do get gifts. I noticed tonight, Subaru, probably when you get home, you'll see it on the news, Subaru donated some money to them. So, so, so that's really what, what we're saying. If you have any other questions, we've been around a long time. I, I, I've worked with, I go around town and I say, oh, that used to be my patient, but I can't tell anybody. You gotta keep it a secret.
Very good. Any questions? Appreciate your.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Next will be the folks from Lifeflight. Hello.
Hi there. I'm Anna, I'm the development director at Lifeflight. We are the state's only emergency air medical service. You can basically think of us as a flying ICU that serves every hospital in every community in Maine. Through our foundation, we raise funds to support capital needs for Lifeflight, so that includes specialized medical equipment that we have onboard, our aircraft, so our helicopters, our fixed-wing airplane and our ground trucks. We also raise funds for educational programming, which I thought I may have seen the fire department back there, I see police. But we work with local EMS agencies and fire departments to bring our crew into communities to do training so they know how to call for us, when to call for us, how to help us safely land when we get there. And then we also raise funds for aviation infrastructure, so a key piece of that is our remote landing zone project. So that's basically a database of remote landing zones across Maine, so when Bucksport does call for us to come, we know where we can go, whether it's a parking lot or a baseball field, we know that it's safe and clear and flat and that we can land there. So every year, we do go out and approach towns for funding. Since inception, we have received over eight hundred and forty thousand dollars from two hundred and sixty-six communities in Maine, which is remarkable. Thank you for that. This year, we are asking Bucksport for just over a thousand dollars, which is a rate of twenty-five cents per person based on the 2020 census. A little data to go into that ask of the town is since inception, we've flown ninety-nine residents, we've had thirteen scene calls to the town of Bucksport, and last year, we transported nineteen residents. So thank you all for your support. You've been donors for nine years and you've been very generous and we thank you for your consideration of another gift. Happy to answer any questions. All right, thank you.
Appreciate you being here, thank you. Next is Loaves and Fishes Food.
Hello. Hello. I'm Jessica, I'm the program director at Loaves and Fishes in Ellsworth. Loaves and Fishes is a significant source of supplemental food resources to Bucksport residents. In the past twelve months, we've served a hundred and sixty-eight individuals from sixty Bucksport households. These individuals made up eight hundred and sixty-five shopping trips to the pantry. That's close to a hundred percent increase from last year. The increase in the number of Hancock County neighbors in the past year reflects the Bucksport statistics. We welcomed nine hundred and thirty-nine families who never needed to visit the pantry before, bringing our total registered families to over seventeen hundred. And we've distributed over a million pounds of food and hygiene products to local families. We owe our success in meeting this challenge to our generous donors, including twenty active volunteers and donors from Bucksport. We thank you in advance for your consideration and that's that. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Northern Light Hospice.
Yeah. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Sarah Joy. I am the director of philanthropy for Main Coast and Blue Hill Hospitals, here on behalf of my colleague Maddie, who represents our home care and hospice wing. We're asking for five hundred dollars in funding. We have asked that for the last two years, up from two hundred and fifty in past giving and we do appreciate that past giving at that level. In fiscal year twenty-three, we did service fifty-nine total patients in Bucksport with a hundred and thirty-four visits. And that a hundred and thirty-four visits can encompass hospice care, OT, PT, speech services, as well as care in the home and things like immunization services for patients who are unable to leave their home. In addition to those referred services, so our services do have to come from a referring provider and we do provide that care regardless of the patient's ability to pay when those referrals come through. And Medicare covers only fifty percent of our service fee. So that means we are doing charity care and offering that care when needed. And so your donation does help offset those costs right here in the community. Questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks for having me.
We work with them.
Yes.
They, they, we work very closely with their organization and I've always had very good, a good, a good luck with the program and it'll be good to get back to work again.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And same, I'm well aware of your organization as well and I think that's wonderful. Yeah, thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you. We are heading down the home stretch in the SPCA of Hancock County. Now we're really heading down. All right.
Nobody here?
No. Last, the last group this evening is the WIC program. Maybe they snuck out, maybe they've had forty-five minutes in, they decided, okay.
That's unusual. They always.
That's all the groups this evening. Any questions from the council? Comments? Anything? I'll open it up and make sure we're.
Good job. You change your, the way you're running it is good. Yeah.
The three minutes, yeah, absolutely.
I have a question. You don't have enough money for that whole figure, right? Aren't there other ways to, it just seems to me in hearing all about, all of these requests, that they're so worthy, how do we, how do we not give each of them what they're asking? You know, I mean, is there any way for the town to look at getting funds elsewhere to meet that need?
I'll answer that question this way. Not knowing the answer to the last part of your question in terms of looking for funds elsewhere, but suspecting that those options are very limited, here's what I'll say. I think I have every confidence in this group of people sitting here with me, leaving myself out of that. I mean, I'm a pretty empathetic person too, but in terms of this group, in terms of, we kind of have a couple of roles here. Obviously, it's the stewardship of the budget, but obviously, we've all been sitting here and listening to the cause and so I'm a big believer in that budgets are priorities. And I have every confidence that this group here will be able to make the decisions that are going to both reflect the priorities of Bucksport and be responsible to the taxpayers of Bucksport as well. Yep, but we are limited. It's just, that is just the nature of the, of what we're looking at. I do think it's worthy to consider the library's request, but I'm just one person. So that, that would give, you know, there's still a conversation that needs to be had even if we go that direction. So, yeah, your question is a hard one. If, if I'm missing anything, I'll count on the town manager to bail me out. But, but again, I firmly believe and will state wholeheartedly that this group here is a, is a great group and a balanced group in terms of taking a look at these thoroughly and making a good decision in terms of how we fund them. Yep.
I remember prior to the town, the town having a policy that this became a very difficult process to manage as part of the budget because it was all over the, and you spent, or the council at the time spent a good deal of time, effort, energy developing the policy, which includes more than what do you want? It includes what do you do, where are you located, what are your, what, how do you benefit people in Bucksport? Which all carry weight when the council evaluates this, which you'll do when you make your decisions in regard to the final budget in May, but when it came to the one percent of the prior year's tax commitment, it was to have a defined number that represented a percentage of total expenditure from tax dollars for a certain service. And one percent of total tax dollars for, is more than some departments give because their funding is either offset by revenues or their, their budgets are not as high as eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So that's where the one percent came from. It's, it's really considering the number of legal responsibilities for public safety and trash and blah, 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 have the, this one percent is a choice because I can tell you that many communities do zero. They, they do not fund outside agencies. That, that is a, a reality and, and I, I think that.
Many of them cap it at like five hundred dollars to no more.
I come from a community that was ten thousand, don't ask for anymore. I don't care if there's a hundred of you sitting in the room. Yes, I know, but Bucksport's done it differently and the way they've approached it is generally, if everybody can't have everything they want, the council's tried to give entities what they need, you know, to, to be fair and equitable in that respect. So, yeah, this is, this one percent of the budget encompasses as much discussion concern as an additional twenty-five percent in terms of time, effort and energy because we all do sit here and listen to what the, what all these entities are doing for the people in our community. And if, if somebody's doing it, we're not. And even if it's not our role to do it, is it a service that we consider is important to our residents is another concern. So I've gone way past three minutes and I apologize, but, but that's where this came from. And it came from that so that there would be a, a process that you could understand that was related to real numbers and percentages of budgets in terms of the overall expenditures of the town, how you're utilizing your resources and, but it was an ugly process, if you remember. Anyone?
I wasn't on the council, but.
I was not on the council, but I was the.
I was running for the council and I was at those meetings and I remember, yep.
I'd say ugly just because everybody wants something different. I think that the council will come out and maybe everybody's a little bit unhappy, maybe some are happy, some are not as happy as they want to be, but the council tries hard to have winners and winners and I think that will be the goal.
But to sum up, yeah, the presentations this evening have not made our conversation that's going to happen any easier. In a way, although, well, to be fair, it kind of did because, you know, we've seen the value of a lot of, but it's hard to then say, okay, we're going to attach a dollar figure to that value and, but you have to, that's why we're here, so, yep. Thanks, everyone. Anything else? Chairman, ten motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned, second.
As a favor. Thanks, everyone.